Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you will please rise, I have asked Supervisor Gould to lead us in invocation. And afterwards, I'm going to invite Mr. Hunter Escoffier, who's the chairman of the Mojave County Teenage Republican Group, to lead us in the pledge.
Join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you this day for this great nation that you've given us, Lord, and we thank you for this county that you've given us to manage, Lord. Help us to make wise decisions in this meeting today and forever in the future, Lord. Watch over our county employees as they work today, keep them safe, and bring them back safely to the loving arms of their family. Watch over our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines that are in the outer reaches of the world defending our freedom. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Mr. Escoffier, you want to come up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Okay, I need a motion to call for -- first of all, is Supervisor Johnson on the phone? I didn't hear it.
Yes.
Oh, you are? Okay. Welcome. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on July 15, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, moving on to official business. Mr. Esplin, do we have any litigation claims and demands to discuss this morning?
Nothing to bring to before the board, thank you.
Okay. On to committee and our legislative reports. Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman. A short report. The Walloway Nation are having meetings in the House committees on their pipeline from Diamond Creek to Grand Canyon West, and they're making some progress on that. And I would hope to have a resolution to present to the board at some time down the next several weeks to show our support.
Is this part of the Water Settlement Act?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
None today, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing today.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, in fact, you and I both attended the rededication ceremony for the restored World War I monument that sits on the front lawn of our historical courthouse. So I just wanted to, for those of you that were not there, this is a monument that was erected in 1928, recognizing more than 2 million American soldiers who served overseas and about 116,000 never returned home. So this monument's very, very important to remember our history. And as Supervisor Angus said in her speech, instead of tearing down monuments here in Mojave County, we're restoring our monuments and proud to do so. So there was a group of volunteers that went out and raised money to replace the 1895 Colt machine gun that they referred to as a potato digger. And that was unveiled by Supervisor Angus after she gave an elegant speech. That was, by the way, fabulous.
Thank you.
And it was just a proud day in Mojave County. So I'll let Supervisor Angus give a few more details if you so choose.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did attend that, and I consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to give the instructions to unveil the monument. And there were about 200 people there, and it was just a great day. And like Supervisor Bishop says, I said I was proud to live in a county that not only honors statues, which are tangible reminders of our past, but we have invested in the maintenance and now the restoration. And I hope yours is all proud, and I wanted to thank the citizens of Mojave County who put that statue up in 1928 originally, and then we rededicated it 91 years later. So thanks. Also, I have something else to report. I don't know when it was, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, I talked about working with the state and the governor's office about obtaining a grant to remodel a structure here in Bullhead City to become a drug treatment center for women. And I'm glad to report West Care did get the grant. It was for $600,000, and then another grant for $200,000 for the IT. And today was the first day that the contractors went into that home to remodel it, and it's going to be fabulous. And I'm very excited that really the first all-women drug treatment center will be in Bullhead City. There's also a drug treatment center for men that's run by Southwest Behavioral, and there'll be help for people who want it. And so when it comes time to do the grand opening, I'll let everybody know, and I hope people could come. And if you want to see it, just let me know, and I'll be happy to take you on a tour. And that's all I got.
Okay, how about county administrators' report?
I have no report today, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Will you ever have a report for us? Okay, and there are no Board of Supervisor meeting minutes to approve. So we'll go on to the call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to public regarding matters not on board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Pursuant to ARS 38-431, a public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticisms made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So the call to public is now open, and I do have a few people signed up. So first, Ms. Sue Ellen Stewart, come on down. State your name and your address for the record, and you've got three minutes.
Yes, my name is Sue Ellen Stewart. My address is 1819 Club Avenue, Kingman, Arizona, 86401.
Jody Shaneman, address is 2410 North Yavapai Drive, Kingman, Arizona.
Good morning, Chairman Hildy Angus. Good morning, Supervisors Watson, Gould, Bishop, and Mike Hendricks, and Ryan Esplin. We are here today because we are very excited about a brand-new club that has been formed in Kingman. Leading our nation's youth is one of the most important jobs, as an American can ever do. This generation holds future congressmen, senators, and presidents. Being a teenage Republican provides an opportunity to have an impact on elections and learn more about the process that makes the United States of America the greatest nation in the world. Most importantly, teenage Republicans become good, involved citizens who care about good government. Finally, successful teenage Republicans' clubs never happen by chance. It takes hard work, dedication, and perseverance. One of the most important things is the preparation of future leaders, which is a goal of the Mojave County Teenage Republicans. And if you know of any teens that are interested in government, ages 13 to 19, please let our TARS adviser, Jody Shaneman, know. We welcome all teens. All teens. Let me emphasize that. So here we are today with our teens, and I'll yield my time over to Jody.
Good morning. I just want to do a quick introduction of our current members of the club. We have Hunter Escoffier, who's already been introduced. He is our chair. We have Vice Chair Austin, and we have our secretary, who is Hunter's brother, Destry. And again, we have two that are not here, and that's Margaret and James Scholl, and they are also members of our group.
About, just a little short thing. About 10 years ago--
Okay, just wrap it up.
Kingman did have a TARS group. However, that group became inactive as of 2011. So with my position with the Republican Central Committee, I decided to bring back the TARS group for not only Kingman, but for Bullhead City and Lake Havasu. And at this time, Lake Havasu will have a TARS group. I have formed that group with a lady who sits on city council, as a matter of fact, in Lake Havasu.
Thank you.
And so--
Thank you very, very much, and welcome, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Cheryl Campo, are you here? Okay, before you come up, may I ask you, you have a zoning use permit. Is this something that's on our agenda for today, or is it something different? But it's not on the agenda today?
No.
Okay, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cheryl Campo. I live at 5587 West Newgarden Drive, Golden Valley, Arizona, 86413. For the last 10 years, I have been trying to get a house put in on my property. And in 20-- I've had a lot of legal problems with Lyndon Woods and the people I went through as far as my warranty date. And after his death in 2013, I came in front of the board in 2015, and I asked for a zoning use permit to put in another home, because the one that he had put in there has many, many issues that just are off the hook and not worth putting any more money into. And so I said, well, since I had already put so much money into it, I'm an artist. I've been fixing it up for the last 10 years, over $25,000 in debt as a workshop. And it's nice. But now, in 2016, when the board, the same day, the board gives me permission, the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Directors, all the paperwork was in order, to a zoning use permit to put in another home. And Vanessa Woods had plenty of time, if she had any grievance, or anybody else, to come in front of the board, or me, or anything, to discuss it, you know? And so when I received my letter that it was approved, I had the water company, $889, put in a water meter, and I went into the permit Developmental Services and spoke with Mike Rodriguez and Jack Sinclair, and that's where everything just fell apart. They would not give me a green card for Jay so he can come out and put in the electric for the new home. And because I was wanting to, my mobile I wanted to put in with 750 square foot.
Ms. Campo, maybe you could speak to your supervisor, and she can help you.
I did. Well, Jean Bishop was the supervisor at the time, and she told me, well, somebody needs to be sued. And she explained to me that the county offices were government employees and that the boards were elected. And I says, well, they're worked together, and they're over this whole county, okay? I've been through five different attorneys, all of them. I took my paperwork, too, and they're, they can't believe it. They're like, what is this?
Okay. Mike, is this something that I can refer her to, you?
I've talked to--
Okay, so what we're gonna, we can't, we can't discuss this here, but I'm trying to get you to a place that maybe can help you, okay?
I've been to the mayor--
Okay.
Been to the county--
Okay. After the meeting, go see this man. He's a miracle worker.
Michael Hendricks?
Yes.
Do you have a card that I could call you, please, and make an appointment to come in and speak with you? Because I've been through full circle--
Okay.
Through five different attorneys, every office, both your boards, GM--
Okay, Ms. Campo, I feel your frustration, so this is, this is what we can do for you today. So thank you very much.
All right. Well, basically, I wanted to know, was my zoning use permit still in place? Because this paperwork is no good. Can I put my house in?
Okay, like I said, you have to talk to other people. Okay? Next up, we have Stephen Bauer.
Okay. Good morning. Can everybody hear me all right? I'm Stephen Bauer. I reside at 4001 East Ryan Avenue, Kingman, 86409. I'm here today to talk to you all about the conditions of our neighborhood. We have reached out to Mr. Watson and code enforcement and all that, but there were a couple of things that, because of some folks that have moved into our neighborhood and are basically turning it into a chop shop. The biggest scare out there is fire, and of course, garbage. It's not healthy. It's not healthy for children, and we want our neighborhoods cleaned up and working right. We're not afraid to roll our sleeves up and get busy to do it, but we still need some help with the authorities and all that. So I guess really, and it's not just in our area of Butler or Birdland or any of that. I'm sure there are other areas of Bullhead and Lake Havasu, but that really doesn't concern us at this point. It's just we can't afford to lose our homes because we're very low-income folks to live in a place that's dangerous and not healthy. And of course, as all of y'all know, you don't want it, you don't want it in your neighborhood, and we don't want it in ours. But I'm very, very afraid of the Fourth of July coming up and the fire danger. I don't think that in our area, it's hammered down to some of these people, you know? We have a terrible problem with weeds and weed abatement, and it's, everything is so dry, it's just going to go up like a Roman candle. Running businesses and EPA and all of that in our neighborhoods, what are these people doing? They're out there, they go out every night, and we feel like they probably have a scanner because we call the police, and by the time they come, they're shut down and quiet. These people don't have services to the home that they're at. They run a generator, basically, all night long to do their, whatever they're doing at night, tearing up cars and trying to strip that stuff out. And I don't want to take y'all's time all day long. We will be asking for a face-to-face meeting with Mr. Watson and the sheriff to find out what's happening. But I guess the bottom line is, is I bought my property here because it was very reasonable. But we want our neighborhood, we don't need an HOA or FORT to be pristine, and who cares if you've got some cars or motorcycles around? As long as you don't have so many, the fire department can't get in there. It's just the garbage and the vermin and all that, that all that creates. So I'm suggesting at least a couple of free dump days in our area. You know, we had one not too long ago, but there are so many low-income and retirement older seniors that can't get out to do this kind of stuff. And like I said, we're willing to roll our sleeves up and help them. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate y'all listening to me.
Thank you very much. Gail LaPointe?
Good morning. Gail LaPointe, 4025 East Ryan. Following up, kind of on the same thing, is we have been working on this diligently, and we find that our ordinances and our code enforcement is lacking. The ordinances give people too much time to get worse, their areas to get worse, and it's, then it gives them too much time to clean it up. This area that Mr. Bauer was talking about is now the stench is building because the heat is building. And there was, yesterday in the Daily Miner, rants and raves, maybe, I don't know if you folks read newspapers, but it said laws and ordinances in Kingman are merely suggestions. No, we need to have this, we need to have more teeth in ours so we can, the code enforcement, I know that they're highly understaffed, from what I hear from Mr. Weaver, and their Google Earth is like way outdated. So this is the kind of thing that needs to be updated so that we can have a handle on our neighborhoods and clean our neighborhoods up. And also, we happened to see on the news the other day that there are grants available to help clean neighborhoods up. You know, these, like Mr. Bauer said, there's a lot of retirees here, there's veterans living in these neighborhoods, there are older people. Some of them are intimidated by this, and that's not good. It's not fair. People should be able to live, like in the invocation, they said, you know, help us, Lord, that we take care of the county we live in. And yes, that's what we want to do, too. But we want it cleaned up, and we want it safe, and we want your help to do it, but I will help, too. I will do, or see, or talk to whoever I need to. I will get, we had a neighborhood meeting the other day. I'll get names of everybody on my street that wants to, even on the next street, Lum, and the other streets around us. But we need to do this as a group, you know? It takes a village, that kind of thing. So this is our little village, and even though we don't want it to be an HOA, we want it to be clean enough to be livable. So thank you for your time, and I'm hoping that somebody can help me if you, if, I don't know what goes on in the process of changing ordinances, to make them more enforceable or make them shorter time limits on what, when somebody has to clean up a property. So please educate me.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Nancy Jones.
Morning. My name is Nancy Jones, and I live over in, at 3839 South Overton Road in Seneke, Arizona. That's by Beaver Dam Littlefield area. And I'm here today because we have a problem that I contacted Gary Watson about back in 2015. A person living in a home behind us, two acres, runs a business out of there buying and selling horses. Well, she does not take care of the horses or the other animals that she has there, and I have contacted Department of Agriculture, Development Services, Building and Zoning, Livestock, Flood Control, Environmental Health, everybody. And last week, came down to the point where a llama died because she is not feeding or watering. And she has anywhere from 14 to 22 horses on that property at any given time. Flood Control came and said they were going to do something because she cut a trench and changing the wash, and she moved way more dirt than she was allowed to move. It's just deplorable conditions for these animals. And all I seem to be doing is getting a runaround of, call this person, well, that, call that person, well, we can't do this. Or they'll call and say, they're going to come out and look at it, so then she'll take her horses up to her mother's place, which is up the street, and leaves them there for two or three days, and then brings them back.
Okay. Supervisor Watson, will you speak to Nancy?
Certainly. Certainly. Yeah, we've been working on this problem for quite a while, and it's unfortunate that this lady doesn't treat her animals any better than that, but--
It's horrible. Right.
Yeah, we, I agree with you. It is terrible.
Okay. I appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, excuse me. I don't have anyone else signed up, but if anybody wants to come down and have their three minutes, anyone? Okay, I will close the call to public. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Items 5 through 31 will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman. Do we have to exclude item 8, as requested by Mr. Walsh, I believe?
Okay. Any others?
That's it.
Okay. Supervisor Gould?
None today, ma'am.
Supervisor Bishop?
Number 20, please.
Number 20. Okay, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items--
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
You also had a request for 25 and 26 to be pulled with no action.
Oh, yeah, I had, I'm sorry. 25 and 26. Yeah, I'm sorry, I had that on my thing, but I didn't say it. Okay. So it's a motion to approve consent agenda items 5 through 29, minus items 8, 20, 25, and 26.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Wouldn't that actually be through 31?
Do I, if it's, if there's nothing on it, it still has to be 31?
We still say 31.
Okay, so I'm, excuse me, so I need a--
I'll correct my motion to include items 30 and 31.
Okay.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 8 is to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019067, a rezonative assessors parcel number 22716067A, which is to allow for an automotive, marine, diesel, and off-road repair shop in Fort Mojave. Oh, is this what, do we have to just pull this for no action?
No. Chairman Angus, if I could add, this one, they need to have a public hearing because there was a protest or an objection to it, so it requires a public hearing.
So we just take no action today?
No, you will. You can hold, you just have to open the public hearing, allow a public hearing, then close the matter, and then you can go forward with it.
Now?
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing on item 8.
We have to allow people to speak on this one because there was a letter--
Okay. So does any, so does anybody here wish to speak on this item, which is a rezon for an automotive, marine, diesel, and off-road repair shop with sales showroom in the Fort Mojave vicinity? Anyone? Okay. Seeing, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Now can we approve? Or, okay? I need a motion to approve item 8.
Madam Chairman, I move that item 8 be adopted.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item 20. And this is just to accept the recommendation of a transportation commission for the capital improvement projects.
I think that was the item that I pulled, Chairman Angus, and the reason I pulled it is in reviewing the capital improvement projects listed. Cottonwood Road was removed from, from what I believe was the previous ask. So I'd like to ask Mr. Les Henley to come up and speak on that, because I believe this road, Cottonwood Road, is in my district, and it's, there's a lot of things going on out there, and I'd really like to see this road hard-surfaced. We have a proposal for a very large animal rescue-- We have a proposal for a very large animal rescue park by the Jonathan Kraft from Keepers of the Wild, and then we also have a hemp farm development that's going in up there and with veterans housing, and so I'm very interested in this, and I hope we can get Cottonwood Road put back on the five-year plan this morning before we vote. So, Mr. Les, can you help me out on that?
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Cottonwood, Cottonwood Road Soil Stabilization, basically plating it with asphalt millings when they become available, was on previous versions of the capital improvement road program to stabilize the first eight miles at an estimated cost of around $400,000. It was removed from the SERP that's in front of you today. Perhaps Ryan may wish to weigh in on some of the reasoning?
Yes, I can do that if I may, Chairman. This was one, when we were looking at this and going through the process, we discovered that Mr. Lautowski had a conflict of interest involved with this particular road, and so we felt it best, and he disclosed it to us, he disclosed it to the public at the commission meeting, he disclosed it, he also did it according to our policies and said, "This is the conflict of interest that I have." And so, at that time, he then recused himself, and he's no longer participating in this particular item, this particular issue, for that very reason. And so we felt that, in order to make sure everything was clean, everything was on the up and up, I recommended that it be polled for this particular year so that it could be, have an opportunity to reboot or restart in the future. This doesn't mean that it will never, ever be done, by no means. It just means we want to make sure that the public is aware that there is a conflict of interest, which is, it happens at times, occasionally a conflict of interest will arise, and so we went through the proper protocol and procedures to make sure that it was disclosed, that the public was aware of it, and we took, we removed it just to make sure everything was, was above board. But that doesn't mean that next year it can be brought forward, it just means that when it's brought forward again, that at that time, that Mr. Lautowski would not participate in the process, to make sure that he is not part of that, and that everybody's aware of that conflict of interest. And so I still believe, even though I agree that this is, it sounds like a critical road, an important road, particularly to Supervisor Bishop's district, I would not recommend move forward with it this year on it. My understanding, according to the process, it can be brought back, you can bring it back next year at another time, and so I would recommend waiting to do it until next year, at which time it can be restarted without, and then we already know what the conflict of interest is, and Mr. Lautowski would not participate, Mr. Henley and also Mr. Walsh would be the persons that would be responsible for that, to make sure that it can move forward.
I just wanted to say something real quick. Right now, Highway 93 is being resurfaced, and these millings are going to be available, and that's going to be for a short period of time. If the county doesn't take advantage of the millings that ADOT is creating, this road won't be able to be put in for the dollar amount that it's, it's going to be put in for now.
On that subject, Supervisor Bishop, we began the, back in the spring, anticipating as much as 74,000 cubic yards of millings that we might be able to get from Arizona Department of Transportation from those projects. So far, they have been recycling them into their own project to widen shoulders and to be part of their asphalt mix, and so far this summer, we've gotten none. We do have hopes of getting a considerable amount, not as much as the full amount that we had hoped to get, and in addition to Cottonwood Road that we're discussing, there are other roads in the SERP in the same category that were targeted for hard-surfacing when millings became available.
Right.
And just to echo what Ryan said, removing this project from the SERP had nothing to do with the merits of the project, the need for the project. Certainly, there are a number of developments that are going in out there and plan to go in out there, and it wouldn't be the end of the story for Cottonwood Road.
And Madam Chairman, I, I wanted to let the board know my feelings about the SERP. One of the responsibilities of our Transportation Commission is to review and to recommend to the board a capital improvement project every year, and that's for roadway improvements. But their recommendation should in no way prohibit the Board of Supervisors from weighing in on what you all believe are important roadways, and actually changing and modifying their recommendation to suit what the board chooses as our capital roadway improvement project. So if you all wanted to include Cottonwood Road, and this is just my opinion, or any other road in the county that you believe is important, that's certainly the board's choice. The board recommends a capital improvement project, the board adopts it, I'm sorry, the commission recommends a capital improvement project, the board adopts the capital improvement project. That's your all's charge, and I don't believe you can give that, that away. So what I'm saying is, the commission's recommendation isn't the final word, it's your, your decision on what the final listing of projects would be. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop?
Well, I would like to go forward, even though our county attorney recommends waiting, but I don't think that's a legality that we, we really have to wait. I think if Mr. Lautowski recuses himself and steps away from any decisions on this maintenance, my fear is that these millings won't be available, and most of the cost of improving a hard-surfaced road like this, Mr. Henley, you can confirm, is, is the cost of hauling the material, getting the material and then hauling it to the location. And since this, this work is being done by ADOT, and it's extensive work, there's going to be a lot of millings available.
Yes, ma'am.
Once, once this improvement project is completed from ADOT, they're probably not going to be doing those millings for another 10 years, I'm guessing, so, so the time is ripe now to go forward, and if, if we don't have enough millings, you know, the further we go on Cottonwood Road, the better. We're not going to buy millings to complete eight miles. If it only does four, you know, that's, that's better than what's out there now. And there are some big things going out there that's going to benefit Mojave County tax-wise, so.
Okay. So can the motion now be made, putting this back?
I believe that you could go forward with the motion. As I said previously, we are, we recommended to wait till next year, just to have a clean break, but I don't think it's absolutely necessary, I'll admit that, I do. I always want to take just a very precautious route, but just a couple of things to keep in mind. Moving forward, if, if the board so wishes to move that direction, we need to make sure that this project does not involve the participation of Mr. Lautowski, he's already disclosed the conflict of interest, and that he's not to participate in any, in any way with the Cottonwood Road or anything with that regard. I believe the arrangement was that Tim Walsh would, would ultimately sign off on any final decision, because he's in a different department. Public Works, like Les Henley here, would still run the project, but Les would then respond to Tim Walsh as the final person, is that correct? At least, that was my understanding of it, this particular project.
So whether it happened this year or next year, all of those things you just said would happen, so...
Sure, we just, we're just trying to make a clean break, and partly it was also the rationale that I, that I understand, is that we don't have as many millings as you think. And we initially thought there was going to be a lot more millings, but there's not going to be nearly as many, it can go on other projects, and so that's why we were taking that cautious approach. But, but, so you're aware, I mean, you understand that, that Mr. Lautowski disclosed the conflict of interest, it's a particular property that he has, that he owns in the area, and a million it would, would benefit him, he's disclosed it, he is no longer participating, he is not involved with this project in any way, it'd have to be completely independent from any kind of judgment or anything to use with that. I see, I see legitimate reasons why you would want to do it, I mean, for the reasons that you've already stated, and I'll add to that. We were looking at this, this is a, this is a critical road, it's an important road, where, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the I-11 is thinking about putting an interchange at that location, is that correct? Or...
I believe it is.
That was one of the proposals that they're having in the future. Also, between, between the dam and down to, between, between the Hoover Dam and Davis Dam, this is the only connection that you have really to, to the river on our side of the, on the Arizona side, so that is also another consideration as well. And frankly, there's also a number of property owners in the area. There are property owners who would, who would benefit from it and so forth. I just want to make sure that you're aware of all the facts and all the information, so you have those, that you can make your own decision as to whether to move forward and include that in the program or not.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So if we put Cottonwood Road back in there, does that mean we need to remove one of the projects that's in the 1920 plan?
You'd have to refer to Public Works, they'd have to answer that question.
The SERP that you're voting on, Supervisor Gold, is fiscally unconstrained.
Chairman Angus?
The short answer would be no.
Okay.
The wish list.
Okay, so this is merely a wish list, then?
It's a wish list. As Supervisor Bishop expressed a while ago, it is very dependent on getting the millings from Arizona Department of Transportation. And there are several roads on the SERP that have that same note, that we intend to stabilize them as millings become available. And whether Cottonwood is in the SERP or not, we have every intention of grabbing all the millings we can as they become available from ADOT for use on county roads in the SERP.
Does the trend for ADOT to recycle their own millings and use them for their own roads, is, do you see that becoming the standard?
We saw it a bit last year when they did the previous paving project down on the other side of Rosies. They used a good bit, but they can't use them all.
Okay.
We still got a fair amount off that that went, I believe mostly to Skipper and Spear up in White Hills.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have one last comment. Mr. Lautowski purchased this property on Cottonwood Road before he came to work for Mojave County, which was years ago, and he, he doesn't live out there, so, not that that makes any difference with the conflict of interest, but it's not benefiting him as far as his residence, so...
How about Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything you want to ask?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And if, Chairman, if I could add just one other thing too, I, one of the rationales that, that when I had previously recommended to hold off to the next year was the fact that there was limited millings, it thought, well, probably not going to be able to get to it anyways this year, you might as well just wait till next year, but, so that was just kind of the part of the rationale, just, it's just easier from a, from just say, hey, it's not worth it, and so, but if the board here thinks that they can move forward with it, I do believe that there is a clean break, and this would be an independent decision of the board to make, and so you could do that. But that was just kind of the, one of the rationale, one of the reasonings behind doing that.
So Mr. Henley, could we add this to the SERP for early 2020 and still be in, in a position where we could make it work?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, today's the day that you're going to be approving the SERP. It's either going to include Cottonwood or not include Cottonwood, but it's going to be solely a board's choice, that's the clean break, and the board's authority to include either Cottonwood or whatever other roads you believe are important that weren't included in this capital improvement plan. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so Chairman Angus, I would like to make a motion that we approve item number 20, accept the recommendation of the Transportation Commission to approve the FY 2019-2020 Five-Year Capital Improvement Road Program for completion of capital improvement projects as county and/or supporting state or federal funding is available and including Cottonwood Road hard-surfacing. Okay?
Second the motion.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 25 and 26 was asked to be pulled by the sheriff's office, wants to come back with some new numbers, correct? So no action will be, do I have to take it one at a time, or can I just do them together? No action to be taken on 25 and 26? Okay, so no action. All right, then we are done with the consent agenda, and it's time for public hearings. Number 32, I'm going to open the public hearing, discussion possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2019-18, which is a rezon of parcel number 402-32-225 from an AR zone to a C-2H. I believe I have a few people signed up to speak to this. First off is Monty Home. Has he signed up too? Rick Anderson? Okay.
Rick Anderson, 820 Chaparral, Mesquite, Nevada, and I just wanted to say, if you guys had any questions for us that you wanted us to answer, then we're here and available. Just wanted to say that we had quite a few people in support of it, we have like 65 people or so on a, on a list, people that approve it, and it's a pretty awesome-looking project, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to 32? So I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, with the public hearing closed, I'll make a motion to approve item number 32 as outlined with the following. With the additional conditions that this property will be rezoned to C-2H, only to allow for manufactured home park with a special use permit and an RV park, and that all developments shall comply with Mojave County zoning ordinance. The RV manufactured home park plans shall show the infrastructure to be constructed or extended for development. The proposed infrastructure shall be capable of providing adequate services to end users. Any further obstruction fencing required by Mojave County ordinance shall be provided by a masonry wall of at least six feet in height that complies with the adopted building codes.
It's a long one. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 33, I'm going to open the public hearing, discussion possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2019-021, which is a rezon of the assessors parcel 402-33-107, same project, I think, and the commission recommended approval. That you, you're only here for questions, correct? Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For item number 33, I move to approve item 33 as outlined forthwith, with conditions that the property will be rezoned to C2, to only allow for an RV park with a special use permit and an indoor storage facility, that all developments shall comply with Mojave County zoning ordinances, site plans and/or RV park plans shall show the infrastructure to be constructed or extended for that development. The proposed infrastructure shall be capable of providing adequate services to the end users. Any view obstruct fencing required by Mojave County's ordinance shall be provided by a masonry wall of at least six feet in height that complies with the adopted building codes.
Okay. Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 34, I'm opening the public hearing, discussion possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2019-022, which is a special use permit for assessors parcel number 402-33-107. Anyone wish to speak? You wish to speak again? No, okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to approve item number 34 as outlined forthwith, with the additional conditions that all developments shall comply with Mojave County zoning ordinances, site plans and/or RV park plans shall show the infrastructure to be constructed and extended for the development. The proposed infrastructure shall be capable of providing adequate services to the end users. Any view obstructing fence required by Mojave County zoning ordinance shall be provided by a masonry wall of at least six feet in height that complies with the adopted building codes.
Okay. Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 35 was brought by Development Services Director Tim Walsh. I'm going to open the public hearing, discussion possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2019-057, which is a special use permit for assessors parcel number 402-32-225 to allow for a manufactured home park in a C2H highway commercial zone in the Beaver Dam vicinity. This was recommended approval by unanimous vote. Anybody, I have no one signed up, anybody wish to speak to this? Same thing, okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to approve item number 35 as outlined forthwith, with the additional conditions that shall, development shall comply with Mojave County zoning ordinances, the RV manufactured home park shall show the infrastructure to be constructed and/or extended for the development, the proposed... The proposed infrastructure shall be capable of providing adequate services to the end users. Any view obscuring fence required by Mojave County zoning ordinances shall be provided by a masonry wall of at least six feet in height that complies with the adopted building codes.
Okay. Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, I'm positive.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 36, I'm opening the public hearing, discussion, possible action to approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019-070, which is a denial of an amendment to Mojave County General Plan and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan. Anyone wish to speak to this? 36, I do have somebody signed up. John Burrows.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Burrows. I reside in Mesquite, Nevada. The subject property of item number 36 is in the scenic Arizona area. Staff recommended approval of the plan change, as in 36, the zoning change in 37. The commissioners did not agree and declined approval. I was not able to attend that meeting, but understand that possibly the objection was under the zoning change for outdoor RV storage. I provided some pictures of what conceptually we would propose to build on this property. As we look from the subject property to the north, the south, and the west, we see a number of commercial metal buildings in the area. We think what we're proposing is consistent with what is in character with the area development and we think that what we are proposing is attractive, would enhance the area, and would meet a need that we've determined just in talking to individuals in the area. So we're back just requesting a reconsideration of this plan change and I'll be up with either the same comments or we can just use the same comments as you approached 37 on the agenda item. And we respectfully request your approval in consideration of what we are proposing. If on 37, that ends up taking that zoning change to not include outdoor RV storage, which I think was the main objection, then we're happy to do that and just do the buildings that you see in the pictures that we provided, which are attractive. Thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions?
For the applicant?
Yes, I do. I guess I'm a little confused as to why we're recommending the denial of 36.
Anyone have an answer to that question?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Watson, could I get you to restate that question? I'm sorry.
Item number 36 is for the denial?
So, item 36 was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission last month and the commission elected after discussion to deny the amendment to the general plan and the area plan and then also the subsequent rezone to that. There was some discussion and I don't wish to speak for the commission, but I will point out in the board memo, if I'm permitted to... During that discussion, there was some concern, as the gentleman indicated, that the outdoor storage... But I believe the commission's main contention was the fact that the proposal extended into the residential area by some distance there. As you'll see, the pink area on the map on the overhead, the pink area there is your neighborhood commercial. The darker red is general commercial. And this would... And then the tan over to the east is medium density residential. The amendment before you in this item would extend the general commercial area. So basically, that enclosure right there, the black enclosure, would all be the dark red general commercial. The commission had some concerns with that and I believe that was the main concern and main reasoning for their recommendation of denial.
Mr. Walsh, and the applicant had just indicated to us that he would remove the outdoor RV aspect to that. Was that offered to the commission at that time?
No, at the time, I think as the applicant mentioned, he was not at the commission meeting, so that was not presented to them for their consideration.
Okay, that clarifies things for me.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
In the backup, it says that it's not serviced by water or sewer system. There is also opposition from surrounding property owners and the expansion of the commercial land use designation would not be consistent with the surrounding land use designations. That's all, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing's still open. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Come on down.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I was at that P&amp;Z hearing. I did speak with the... Actually, was approached by the opposers after that meeting to make sure that their wishes were heard because they couldn't be here today. They did not believe that the owners would come back and request anything, but here we are. There was significant opposition from the surrounding owners. The inclusion of the commercial back into the residential area was very offensive to them for lighting, traffic, storage, block walls in front, everything that's connected with commercial property. That picture that Tim showed, I had the same thing that they've encroached into that medium residential density. Some of the opposers had built really expensive homes directly adjacent to the proposed expansion of commercial. At the time, they had a realtor came and spoke that this area in particular had residential improvements, that sales and values had gone up. I don't have the exact numbers, over 20% in terms of residential for this area. They absolutely did not want to stop that rule and they believed that this commercial expansion like this would be very detrimental and they were very opposed. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer, but that was their wishes and they did ask me to say that if there was any opposition.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Hicks, the applicant has offered to withdraw the outdoor storage of the RVs. Would that make the surrounding property owners a little bit more amenable to the project? I've got pictures here that were supplied by the applicant of appears to me a very nice storage operation. Is there a possibility that he could modify his program and your people surrounding the area might be more acceptable? The reason I'm saying this is because the area is subject to a lot of people coming in for the winter time and enjoying the pleasant atmosphere up there, that there are a lot of RVs and there are a lot of campers and trailers and those things. So, I'd rather see those things stored in a real nice storage facility than just out willy-nilly on each and every property, so...
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Is there a possibility that we can get these people to agree?
I would tell you, of course, anything's a possibility. So I don't know. But I would tell you, their major concern is they've built some very expensive homes directly adjacent to this to the north that they believe will greatly devalue those homes and they're something like a quarter of a million to $400,000 homes, that's what I was told. And actually, some of the pictures, you can see some of those new homes going in there and they just thought that that was a deal killer for the initial investment that was already there. I do think open lot storage, you know, removing that helps, but I think the impact was really lights for commercial, the storage, the traffic that's now going to go back there. And they really feel strongly that the existing general plan, area plan for that area, which shows commercial directly along the scenic boulevard, is exactly what should stay. But I understand your willingness to try to work with someone. They're just not here, I wouldn't have to ask them. I'm just telling you that they were very opposed and they did have some lists of opposition. So I'm not sure how successful that would be.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. What I'd like to do is table this item for probably two meetings.
Two meetings.
In order to see if the applicant can make any inroad to the folks that are closely associated property-wise. I can understand their concerns. Believe me, if I were building a half a million dollar home, I would be very hesitant to be willing to do that. But at the same token, there needs to be some type of facility up there for long-term storage and storage of these items.
Okay, so you want to table this for 30 days?
30 days.
Or continue it?
And see if the applicant can...
Excuse me? Continue.
Continue for 30 days. On item number 36.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 37, I'm going to open the public hearing, discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019-071, which again is denial of a rezone of assessors parcel number 402-22-202. Do you want to speak?
This is John Burrows again. Just wanted to make one comment respectfully with the comments that were made in opposition. I can appreciate that. We want to do nothing that detracts from the value of properties out there. That's never would be our intent. And I don't want to put words in the people that did attend that commission meeting. My understanding was that there was only one letter, one response in opposition to that. That there was the church that's just across the street and adjacent, well, it's down the street just a little bit from our property, did get some congregants to sign a petition against it. Those people that signed that petition, to my knowledge, are not any of the local property owners, but attend that church that is nearby. Again, it was my understanding, I can be corrected because I wasn't there, that there was only one letter out of all of those that we sent out to nearby property owners that came back in the negative. So, thank you again.
Any questions? Anyone else wish to speak? Item 37, I'm going to close the public hearing. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. I'd like to continue this item for another 30 days to see if the applicant can make any headway with the property owners. And I'm sure that if he were to outline the fact that there will be no outdoor RV storage, that might be helpful.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 38, opening the public hearing, discussion, possible action to approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019-072, which is an amendment to Mojave County General Plan and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan. And this was recommended approval, excuse me, by seven to one. I don't have anyone signed up. Anybody wish to speak to this? Then I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. Item number 38, I'd like to approve the adoption of Board Resolution 2019-072, the amendment to Mojave County General Plan and amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan.
Okay, second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 39, I'm opening the public hearing, discussion, possible action to approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019-073, which is a rezone of assessors parcel number 402-77-001H from an agriculture residential to a commercial manufacturing open lot storage. This was approved by a seven to one vote by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't have anyone signed up. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item number 39, I'd like to approve the adoption of Board Resolution number 2019-073, a rezone for parcel number 402-77-001 and AR agricultural residential zone to a commercial manufacturing open lot storage.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item 40, open the public hearing, discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019-074, which is an amendment to Mojave County General Plan and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan from a light industrial land use designation to an SR suburban residential land use designation. And this was recommended approval by unanimous vote. Anyone wish to speak? 40. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. At this time, I'd like to approve the adoption of Board Resolution number 2019-074. That's for the amendment to the Mojave County General Plan and amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan.
Okay, motion?
I'll second that, I'll...
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 41, opening the public hearing, discussion, possible action to approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019-075, which is a rezone of assessors parcels number 402-20-035 and 36 from a residential recreation 10-acre minimum lot size zone to a recreational area 2-acre minimum lot zone. Anyone wish to speak? I don't have anybody signed up for 41. Anyone? Closing the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to approve item number 41, adoption of the Board Resolution 2019-075 for the rezone of assessors parcel number 402-20-035 and 036.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 42, opening the public hearing, discussion, possible action to approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019-09-041 from SFR manufactured home prohibited limited animal privileges zone to an agricultural residential zone to allow for an accessory structure to be built prior to a residence in Fort Mojave. We do have a few people signed up to speak for this one. You all seem to be in favor. Oh no, there's someone... Okay. 42, we have Vicky Shilim? Shilem? Shilim? Excuse my butchering of your name.
Good morning and thank you for hearing us through this drying time. Anyway, I am the wife of Delmar Sanders that owns the property. Now, what we had proposed to do was to put on a garage for storage of our toys, like everybody has in Arizona, before building a residence. The property is zoned at an ROA. There is only three people, to include ourselves, that was notified that has that zoning of an ROA. All the rest of the properties around us is AR, of which we asked for, or RO, of which I don't know what it is. But looking back on our... Priscilla Anderson's realtor noticed that we went by the property. She listed it as an RO, single-family housing. Okay, now, of this, everybody around us, like I say, is AR or RO, except for those three. Now, the house right beside us is a manufactured home and I think that this is what is mostly against... Everybody's speaking is about the manufactured home being taken away from the zoning. Well, of the letters that was received before the board, we had only had privilege to see four of them. One of them said that if we build a garage there, we're going to increase the criminal activity. Well, I don't really think so. The other one said, because this properties that we bought also has a wash through it, that we were going to intimidate the animal activity through the properties. And they like to walk through there and watch the animals. Well, then, now, I think they must be impeding on our property if they're walking through the wash. And if, in fact, we're going to have a problem with the animals, then the new house built right across the wash from us, which is being built at this point, is doing the same thing, bothering the animals. The other two letters says they just oppose. No reasoning for, just oppose. Well, to me, if you oppose, there's a reasoning for. And with that said, I would like consideration of a rezone.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a few more. Bernie Etchem Baron? Please state your name and address.
Bernie Etchem Baron. I have the home at 2098 East Sundance Drive. We good?
Yep.
Good morning. This is a beautiful area. They have beautiful homes. When I purchased my home in this area, the deciding factor was that everybody took pride in their homes. Mr. Sanders wants to build a garage for his RV and his boats, and it's unequivocally unacceptable. It will... It can adversely affect the property value. So, these are the homes... These are the homes in the area. You get that? Here's another one. It's a really nice area. They're big homes. Here's another home. This is my home on the corner. And he's right about the RA zoning. This is the home that's being built across the wash from them. It is enormous. So now, where they're talking about... Oh, one more. One more shot here. There's another home in the area. So you can see the homes are very nice. And now, we're talking about where the zone starts for the AR zoning. And this is what we have to look forward to. I don't know about you, but that is unacceptable. And nobody does anything about it. So, from what I understand also, Mr. Sanders's wife's health is questionable. So, let's say something happens in their circumstances, and they decide to sell or move, and the zoning's already been changed to AR. So now, we can put anything from a Quonset hut to a cell tower, manufactured homes, whatever. And I think it would truly affect the value of the property, and I am unequivocally opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Edwards?
Good morning. My name is Walter Edwards. I live at 2308 Sundance Drive, Fort Mojave. And that orange house was my house. And two doors down is this vacant lot that they're proposing to make a storage lot. Is pretty much what it boils down to, is they don't want to use it for anything but storing their toys, as they just said. And that introduces all kinds of problems to me because once you get your foot in the door, you build a shop, a garage. It turns into an auto repair shop, and nobody lives there, or whatever. So allowing this storage building to be placed there detracts from the neighborhood. And any zone change, to me, should enhance the neighborhood. It shouldn't bring it down. And far as I'm concerned, that would be a nice lot to build a really nice house on. And why you wouldn't is beyond me. I live... The wash goes behind my house. I really enjoy that wash. It's a great separation between me and my neighbor. It was a vacant lot. But otherwise, the... I really enjoy the neighborhood. I didn't care what the zoning was when I bought that lot. I just looked around at the types and level of housing that was in the neighborhood, and I thought that that was a good place to build a nice house. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more who's opposed. Yolanda Castro. You have anything to add?
Good morning. My name is Yolanda Castro Cooch. I live catty-corner from the empty lot. I'm going to make it real simple because I don't understand all this. The lot's zoned to build a house on. So if it's zoned to build a house on it, build a house. If you're building a garage with no juice or water running, it's a humongous story, shit. I've been here longer than anybody here that's here. We live... I live in the stick, the small homes across the street. The pictures that Bernie showed of the custom homes is only added to the value of my house. There is a wash. The woman was right about the rabbits and the bunnies, but nature's going to have to move on, and that has nothing to do with anything. The big home that they are building next to that, and that young man is building a beautiful home, a dream home. Next to him is, I don't know how much property that they have... They own also next to this custom home. And if you zone it for whatever, what's he going to put on that little strip of property? I live in that neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. The neighbors are great. If he wants to build a home, it's designed to build a stick home. Will do a stick home. Other than that, go up the dirt road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant or anybody?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can I get Mr. Walsh to come up?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould?
Mr. Walsh. What prevents them from doing what they want to do now under the current zoning?
So, under the current zoning, the property is currently zoned ROA, which does not allow for an accessory structure to be built prior to the primary residence. So, an RO zoning requires that before you build your garage, you have to build your house first. Now, under the zoning ordinance, technically, they could build their garage with the small living quarters within it and move forward at this point right now without any... Without coming before the board or anything. What this item does is by rezoning it to AR, it allows them to build the accessory structure prior to the primary residence. I'm placing up here the map showing the zoning of the area. The one highlighted there is the property in question. As you'll see, to the east is all AR. To the west is all RO. So this staff recommended approval based on the proximity of that AR. Basically, it would extend that just to the west. But one consideration the board could make, and this was mentioned at the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, is a restriction could be placed preventing any manufactured homes from being placed on this property. I know that that has been one of the items that has been mentioned, both at the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as at this meeting. The concern that if it goes to AR, manufactured homes would be allowed to be placed on the property. If the board added a condition that restricted those manufactured homes, it would limit it to a stick-built home and prevent that concern.
There's no architectural standards for either one of these, the existing zoning or the potential zoning?
No. The Planning and Zoning Commission, we do not have any... I'm sorry, the zoning ordinance does not have any architectural standards for either of those. Looking to Chris to make sure I'm correct in that. No architectural standards for either. Okay.
I'm assuming this is going to be... The proposed building is a metal building?
That I'm not aware. At this point, they approached us to begin construction of the garage. We informed them, under the current zoning, they could not build that accessory structure prior to a primary residence. And suggested in order to do so, they would need a rezone.
So like, as you said earlier, what they could do is build whatever they were planning to build anyway and put living quarters inside the existing building, and then they would conform to the existing zoning?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Supervisor Johnson? She still here? Supervisor Johnson, do you have any questions? Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak? Um, no.
Let him close.
No. We're going to close the public hearing. Okay, this is in your district? Supervisor Gould?
Let him have a closing argument.
With the applicant? You want that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The applicant may come up for...
My name is Delmar Sanders. I live at 4392 Donald Place, Fort Mojave. My rebuttal is that we are planning on building this garage. It'll be aesthetic to the surrounding community. I'm willing to work with the commissioner here to make it... How do I put it? A proposal in there that it won't have a manufactured home on the property. I'm very willing to sign anything to that effect. Thank you.
Any questions?
Madam Chairman, so for the applicant to do that, do we need to continue this to a future meeting so he can go back and work with planning and zoning? To put something on there that would prohibit a manufactured home?
Madam Chair, I don't believe you would have to. You can put that as a condition as part of this if you were approved... If you were to approve the rezone. Correct? Yeah.
Really?
Okay.
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould, you could add the condition as part of the approval today. So as part of the approval for the rezone, you could add an additional condition that no manufactured homes be allowed on-site. You could also state that the garage be site-built as well.
Anything?
Did the applicant?
Can the applicant come down here, please?
Need to pronounce my name or put in my name?
No, no, it's okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Sir, the additional condition that was suggested was that your garage be site-built rather than a metal building? Would that be something that's acceptable to you?
Uh, no.
Okay.
What we have got planned already and designed is a metal building. And it will be, like I said, aesthetic to the community. It will be colored, it's just not a galvanized garage or building. And it will have the trim on it. We are planning on building our home of my wife's future home. We have already a plan for it. So I don't want to build just a two-bedroom house there. We're going to build a 2,200-square-foot house on the property that we have already got designed. So I'm in favor with the people...
Mr. Sanders, when do you plan on doing that? Is that in the near future or in the far future? The home that you're building? Is it in the near future or the far future?
Yeah.
When do you plan on building your home?
When? At the present time, my wife is going through cancer treatment, and she's got three more years on that. And she doesn't want to leave her home at Fort Mojave or on Donald Place because she has her group there.
Okay, thank you.
And so she's really comfortable with that area.
Okay, anyone else have questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I already closed the public hearing before I opened it up again. Don't look at me like that. Okay, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Let's see. I move the adoption of item 42. Approve the adoption of Board Supervisor's Resolution Number 2019-076 for... Let's see. Trying to look for the opposite word of denial. Approval of the rezone of the Assessor's Parcel Number 229-09-041 from an R-RO/AA bracket, SFR/Manufactured Home Prohibited/Limited Animal Privileges bracket, zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for an accessory structure to be built prior to a resident in the Fort Mojave vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona, with the condition that no manufactured home will be placed on the site.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion second.
Chairman, before you vote, this is one, I believe, that needs a four-fifths vote for approval.
Needs a what?
Four fifths. Four supervisors must vote in favor of it.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. That was item 42. We're on to 43. I'm opening the public hearing. Discussion of possible action, approve the increase of the juvenile detention per DM fee from $375 to $377 per day per detainee as recommended by the Office of Financial Services effective July 1, 2019. Anyone wish to speak to this? Okay, going to close the public hearing. Any motion?
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We're now on to the regular agenda. Does anybody need a break?
I could use one.
Yeah? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break. Come back at 11:10. Come back at 11:10. Okay, we're going to reconvene this meeting, and at this time, I'm going to move up items 47 through 52. And I'd like to have, I have to have a motion to waive the reading?
No, we've already done it. You've already...
Oh, because I already did that in the beginning. Okay, so I'm going to waive the reading and take them one at a time. Okay? So we're going to start with agenda item 47, and this was brought by Judge Jill Davis, the Lake Havasu Justice of the Peace. Agenda item 47, I need a motion?
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item 48.
Chairman Angus, motion to approve item 48 is written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 49.
Chairman Angus, same motion to approve item 49 is written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 50.
Chairman Angus, motion to approve item 50 is written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 51.
Chairman Angus, motion to approve item 51 is written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 52.
Chairman Angus, making motion to approve item 52 as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, there you go. All right, now, we're back to now, item 44, right? Right, 44? Jenny? 44. Okay, this is by Public Works Director Steve Lotosky. Discussion possible action, to approve and authorize chairman to sign on behalf of the board a new and amended franchise agreement to remove annual franchise fee and replace with Mount Tipton Water Company requirement to obtain a right-of-way use permit from the county and pay all applicable permit fees for all work events performed through the franchise agreement duration.
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve item 44 as written for the right-of-way use permit from county and pay all applicable permit fees.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 45. Sitting as the Board Directors of the Horizon 6 Improvement District, discussion possible action, acknowledge district's intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake Havasu City for fire protection services expiring on July 23, 2019. Discuss the city's concerns about the condition of the district's water system and the city's ability to provide fire protection in the area, and further direct staff to provide notice to district residents of the effect of the expiration of the intergovernmental agreement. Do have someone signed up. Mary Van Roy.
Thank you, Chairman Angus and the board and staff. My name's Mary Van Roy. I live at 4034 Blue Canyon Road, Lake Havasu City, Arizona, and I'm joined by Sue Lynn, who's also a property owner. You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Sue Lynn Ortiz. I live at 46, 4036 Gold Springs Road.
So we're here representing the residents of Horizon 6, better known as Donkey Acres. And we are here to support the continuing fire protection contract with Lake Havasu City for Horizon 6 Improvement District. It was a 10-year contract that I guess is expiring very soon, and it's been a big surprise to us that the city did not want to renew necessarily. And so we're going to encourage that the supervisors do work with the city to keep that fire protection going. The only thing I'd like to add to that is that I would expect all the property owners in the Horizon 6 Improvement District to help fund the extra cost for fire protection if needed, and also to improve the water district. Right now, it's only if you have a water meter in our community do you get charged, the $5.50 for the fire protection, and then the $30, $40 or more for the water system. And I just found out today that we did actually have major improvements on our booster system in 2017, but they might need... in 2017, but they might need another $100,000 to get it up to where the city is happy with it for our fire protection. And so that's an expense again that comes off of the property owners who have water meters. And I really feel that everybody in the community gets benefits from the water system and the fire protection, so it should be shared and I'm hoping you'll be able to do that. The Improvement District was founded, I don't know, 35, 40 years ago and it did do the original water system with a 10-year bond where all the property owners paid into that. And that was completed and then we did another improvement 20 years ago for the blacktop. And again, it was another bond that property owners who live in that area paid for. We are just very happy with Lake Havasu City Fire Protection. And I think we can only think of two fires that have been out there in the 25 years I've lived there and they were both mobile homes that were both lost. But there must be a lot of calls for public assist. And that again is why people love the fire department, because their public assist. And that's really important to keep that going. The other major reason to keep the contract going is the medical. If somebody has a major emergency and they might be the first people out there is our fire department paramedics. So we really, really want the county and the city to work together and get this renewed and even if you only extend it temporarily until they come up with a better solution that keeps the city happy and the county, we'd really appreciate that. And I had a lot of things, I was going to talk about the water company that we have, but that's coming up two weeks from now.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lotosky about this? Nobody? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Whose area is it? Is it Ron's?
It's Buster's.
It's Supervisor Johnson?
Motion approved.
Oh, second motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, final item 46. Discussion possible action, discuss the call to the public portion of Arizona's open meeting law, including but not limited to a discussion about the public's ability to address items within the board's jurisdiction and the manner in which Arizona law permits public bodies, such as the board of supervisors, to address issues raised during the call to the public without violating the open meeting law. This was brought by Deputy County Attorney Ryan Esplin. You're on.
Thank you Chairman. Just a little bit of background and I provided it as backup, backup. January 8, 2019, Arizona Attorney General notified Mojave County that it received two open meeting law complaints back, the date back to March of 2018. The board then on March 16, 2019, discussed those items and discussed the concerns of the attorney general. Following that meeting, I also had a follow-up discussion with the attorney general and we discussed the various issues that relate to call to the public and the board's jurisdiction as it relates to calling the public. As the board knows, all meetings of the public body shall be public and we follow those rules where we provide notice on an agenda and on that agenda are the only items that the board may discuss, consider, or make decisions about. The reason why we have that agenda or have that, that public notice is to allow the public an opportunity to know what will happen at the public meeting. The legislature has carved out a little exception. So you have this policy where we need to notify the public, we can only talk about things that are in the public, but then the legislature has said we will allow the public to come in and discuss items not on the agenda at a call to the public. That's the little exception that the legislature has created. By doing that, when, first off, the board, it's completely optional whether the board wants to have the call to the public or not. The board is aware that for many years it did not have a call to the public, but then with changes to the board members, then they decided, the board has decided to have that call to the public. It is in what we call a limited public forum, which means that it is limited in terms of what, what items can be discussed and so forth, but that provides some constitutional protections to the speaker. On the one hand, the board can place reasonable time, manner, and place restrictions, but on the other hand, the board cannot, just like any public body, we would not be able to prohibit the content or the speech of the speaker. So if the public raises an issue during the call of the public that are within the board's jurisdiction, the question is, what is the board's jurisdiction? For our purposes, at least when I go to court and things, the court will always determine whether something has jurisdiction over it. Jurisdiction is just a fancy term that just means whether they have the authority over an item. For example, I cannot go and, and issue a speeding ticket because I don't have that authority, I don't have that jurisdiction. I could not decide whether a person is guilty or not of a speeding ticket because I don't have that authority of that jurisdiction. So the question is, what does the board's jurisdiction have? Well, it would take a long, long, long meeting for me to explain all the various items under which the board has jurisdiction, but you have a general idea what is within our jurisdiction, what's in the board's jurisdiction, things like roads, improvement districts, elections, budgetary items, the appointment of officers, contracts, buying and selling and leasing county property, those are often the things that we see that are within the board's jurisdiction. And if you look, most of the ones that I'm looking for when I'm determining what is in the board's jurisdiction, you're usually looking in Title 11 is where I'm looking at. So what, what came to a head and what we, what, what really brought this is, the question is, well, in the call to the public, the person who speaks can only talk about items that are within the board's jurisdiction. And I had previously said, well, I didn't think those items were within the board's jurisdiction. The attorney general, the, the advice that they had given or the recommendation they had given to us was that when somebody comes to the board of the public, if the, if the subject or the topic that they're talking about could conceivably come within the board's jurisdiction, we ought to allow it. If it's relevant to the items that we discussed, you should allow it. Those are kind of the two key phrases the attorney general was getting at was, if it's conceivably within the board's jurisdiction, if it's relevant to items that we discuss, we should allow it. And the third consideration is that frankly, we don't want to get into a game of determining exactly whether something is within jurisdiction or not when they're speaking to us because we don't want to monitor the content, the speech of the speaker. And so that's, I think, what the attorney general was getting at, that's what we talked about and that was what I got from the letter that they had sent to us. Finally, when, what can the board do at the call to the public? I think you've already seen it. The board does a good job of this. Really, there's only three ways that the board can respond. Individual members of the board may respond to criticism made by those who address the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or three, they may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. So that's the only thing that this, that the board can do at that call to the public are those three actions. It is not a time for question and dialogue and I, I've never really seen that from here. The board does a good job of making sure that we don't have a Q and A going on between the person who's speaking and the board. Finally, just something to consider is, it's perfectly normal and permissible to do nothing at, at the call to the public. A person can speak, they can say their piece, get their three minutes, and then the board does nothing. That's perfectly fine. That happens quite often and that's perfectly legal and the attorney general pointed that out to me as well, that many times there won't be somebody who, there's no action to take or nothing to do because you don't have to. So just, that's, that's kind of my report back, my discussion with the attorney general, just to give legal advice to the board and also to the public so the public is aware what goes on at the call to the public. It's an opportunity for the public to speak about items that could be conceivably within the board's jurisdiction, that is within the board's jurisdiction, which is fairly broad, but we, the board can only respond in those three ways and it is not a time for a question and answer. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about this in any way.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Esplin? Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you Madam Chair. Has anybody on the board changed their mind over the last motion we made in regard to
Excuse me, can you repeat that?
Does anybody on the board want to change the motion that was made last time this was brought forward?
What, what was that motion?
Well before, so on the May 9, I believe it was the May 9 meeting, I had him, I recommended that the board acknowledge receipt of the attorney general's letter and the findings by the attorney general. The board motion at that time not to acknowledge receipt.
Oh, okay.
And at this time, I'm not asking the board to make any motion, I'm not asking to make any changes. What I'm trying to do is I'm just saying, you know, this is, I'm trying to explain the position that the attorney general took and I'm trying to explain the board, my position or my belief is, you know, when it comes to call to the public, we ought to allow that public to speak because it's a limited public forum, give them that wide range to speak on topics that could conceivably come before the board, but then in terms of how the board reacts, limit it to those three items that the statute specifically says and move forward. I, I just, I brought this item back for discussion only and not to take any action and if, and we don't need to do anything if you don't wish.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson, do you want to make a motion?
I, I would just make a motion to reaffirm our, our previous motion. I don't see why we're doing this today. I understand that the, Mr. Esplin wants to explain to us about the open meeting law, but at least I still feel that there are certain things that we have no jurisdiction over and we give people the false impression that we can do something by allowing people to address issues that are beyond our control.
Well, so our last motion, we all agreed not to accept that written opinion by the attorney general, correct? And so we don't really have to do anything today.
That's correct.
This was just, as far as I'm concerned, this was just informational.
It was, both for the public and Supervisor Gould has pointed out in the past, what we do today is really for the public as well. People are watching this, it's recorded, we want to make sure the public is aware that, you know, we are not a body that, or excuse me, the board is not a body that, that addresses everything. We hope that they can stay within the jurisdiction of the board, you know? But if, if they go off a little bit, I'm not going to try to police it in terms of saying, well, you can say this, you say that. No, I don't want to get into the content of a person's speech. That is really a slippery slope that I do not recommend that we should go down. But instead, hopefully people can understand that, that what is brought to the call of the public are really just items that the supervisors can, can address and if the supervisors want to do anything, it's not a question and answer, it's just stick to those three items that we discussed.
So unless the supervisor wants to make another motion, I think we should just take no action. Is that amenable to the board? Supervisor Johnson? Are you okay with that?
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay, I just don't quite understand what's going on today. It seems to me we're trying to placate the attorney general, but that's all.
Okay. All right, if there's not anything else, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?